All right, good evening, everybody. We'd like to call it to order. This is January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five, meeting with the Westchester Area School Board. Um, next is our pledge allegiance. Tonight we welcome, uh, several students from Sarah Starkweather. We have Annie, Annie Artervard, uh, Bennett Cheeseman, Ryan Vacati, Sawyer Harrington, and Nora Margers-Mark McCabe, and, uh, from Starkweather Elementary School and associated with their principal, John Meeks. So, pledge allegiance, if everybody can stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, and we'll let the, to start with, uh, students give us an update on their school.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Annie, and my fifth grade transfer, and I am excited to give you sneak peek into Stonehenge, the best school in the universe.
My name is Bennett. Since we could not interview every one of our five hundred and eighty-two students or over sixty staff members, we hope that you will see we have a fun bunch of kids, and it was a great time making this video for you.
My name is Sawyer, and you may notice in the video that no students mention school performance profile data, P S S A testing, or text-dependent analysis as their favorite part of travel.
My name, my name is Nora. We could have gone on and on, but to keep it about five minutes, we hope that you will see that the experiences and our staff relationships and relationships with other kids is what we love most about Starkweather.
Hello, this is our mother.
Um, I like to thank all of our people. I like to thank all of my people. There's one thing you like to say. It's that we're, yeah, look at, alright, there's one thing you're saying. Look at, look at, it's a lot of, yeah.
Um, that is mine, and, um, here's something about this year.
Hi. That's one of my, my concept, and, uh, same way.
In such studies, we would have timed my activities, like, if you see different activities that different parts of my life, that they, that are really special to them, to have people, I mean.
That's really funny.
My favorite part about Starkweather is the amazing students that I get to see, and things I think about. More fun and warmer weather.
What is your favorite part of Starkweather? You know, the key part? The celebration?
The celebration.
That is quite about what it's like when, uh, that people are all pretty. And why do you get a feeling, uh, I would go to a, you know, I guess, so, really, I'll be doing, and, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, my father, eight years, I've earned. My favorite part of Starkweather is that I'm very, that's, uh, my favorite part of my favorite part of Starkweather is beautiful city, and how every teacher is doing, is also well-known and respected here.
What is your favorite thing to do?
So, we have just recently added our new community support, so all students that is a student, like, so I have a whole community that's off to repairs, and we're also adding sex toys around the playgrounds, which is completely fun.
Yeah.
So, design up to be the first, first five to work in the real standard, which revolves around science, technology, engineering, environmental, and sustainability. So, that's what the tech is designed around, to teach students about all this and what you're doing. There are too many to, you know, the process for designing collaboration with other students, involve collaboration with classroom teachers, involve working together, using creativity to design new things, and really, the kind of, the, the vibe of designing, makes a lot of sense.
What is the product?
Oh, right now, I'm hearing, uh, we, 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 we,
On behalf of the, the board and administration, we thank.
Yeah, we're done.
No problem, no problem, no problem. On behalf of the board and administration, we thank you for coming out tonight. It's great to hear about Sarah Starkweather. I was just thinking to myself, I'm starting to feel old. My two children went to Starkweather, and I just kept it in my head, it was about, they got out about twenty-four, twenty-five years ago from Starkweather, but it's, it's good. We always enjoy this part of, of the, uh, the board meetings and, uh, giving us a presentation. Does anybody know who Sarah Starkweather was? Anybody want to fill us in?
First female superintendent.
You got it. So she was a teacher, she was, she was a teacher, then a principal, then a superintendent for like nine or ten years in the late eighteen hundreds. Um, right now, uh, Dr. Christopher and I are going to come and hand out some certificates for you for coming out tonight, so thank you.
Wonderful job, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Appreciate it.
You know, I picture, uh, Su- Superintendent Starkweather, I should run down. You showed her. Thanks. He just asked me, I was, Sarah Starkweather's sister. She was from the nineteen, I just. Thanks.
Already in spin-down. But, yeah, all right, continuing on, there was no special announcements, uh, for this evening. Next day's agenda is roll call. Ms. Sheshor, if you could do roll call, please.
Vice President, Emily Othwaite.
Here.
Director Christie.
President.
Director Dietrich.
Here.
Director Dronell.
Here.
President Fleming. Director Fry.
Here.
Director Herman.
Here.
Director Parkinson.
Here.
Director Worsner.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, that leads us to public comment and the comment protocol. Uh, Ms. Sunquess, please.
Yes, there's one agenda item comment this evening, and so I'll read the statement. Now is the time for public comment on agenda items. The board will follow the procedures established in policy number three. All individuals wishing to comment this evening will require to properly register prior to the designated start time for tonight's meeting by completing the information specified in the public comment registration card. Once called to the podium, each commenter will begin by stating their first and last name and their municipality. Each speaker must limit their comments to three minutes or less per public comment period. Commenters may not cede their time to other individuals. Individuals will be notified by a time clock when their time allotted for public comment has expired. There will be a second public comment period at the end of the meeting for comments from residents following these same guidelines. The board asks that all commentary be directed to the board as a whole. Public comments will be interrupted or terminated if the commentary exceeds three minutes or if the commentary is obscene and or threatening in nature. The public commenter this evening for agenda items is Judy Defonso.
I was looking for my clock. Uh, Judy Defonso, uh, still living in, of all places, East Ocean Township. Um, two comments that I want, or two things I want to talk about tonight. One is four hundred North Penn Street in the borough. Um, it was purchased by the, um, district to be used as a transitional living program, and I know that there's some zoning things that have to happen for that to happen, and I was just going to offer, if you, if you need for a parent whose child has benefited from a transitional living program, to speak at a borough council meeting on, on behalf of getting the zoning put in place, if they allow people from East Ocean to speak, I could speak if not, I could probably dig up some people if you need someone to, uh, you know, sway their, uh, their board in order to get this to pass. I just figured I, I'd throw it out there. Uh, the other thing I, I was thinking about with this, um, building is that with the, being a house, you could kind of do an adulting one-on-one class and teach kids, like, you know, how to shut the toilet off, or what the difference is between a hot water heater and a furnace. I'm thinking that it could be a for-fee kind of class, where maybe the burp, and the district makes a little bit of money here or there on it. I mean, the T L P tends to be, you know, Monday through Friday, school hours, it's going to be an after-school Saturday kind of thing, and just, you know, something that hit my head, uh, that I figured I'd share with you guys. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about was Dr. Olmer. Dr. Olmer and I go back quite a ways. Uh, I met him, uh, through the, uh, Chester County Mothers of Multiples. His twins are younger than my twins. I'm not sure how he's retiring at the same time my husband's retiring, but if you need any tips, you know, maybe the two of you could get together and, and, and do some stuff together, but, uh, I just wanted to take an opportunity, you know, to wish you and your family all the best as you, uh, leave the district and, I don't know, going on to bigger and better things, or more quiet lifestyle or something, but, you know, uh, hopefully you'll have many years in retirement and have a lot of fun, and, uh, you know, I'm in the phone book. If you want to hang out, you know, we could do stuff, you know, whatever. Okay? Well, and I think that's enough for one night, so, uh, everyone have, have a good one.
Thank you for your comments tonight, appreciate it. All right? That moves us to approval of December ninth, uh, meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Director Christie, may I have a second? Director Dietrich? Any questions or comments? All right? Seeing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I'm, I'm an abstainant, I wasn't ready. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Director Worsner, I appreciate that. All right, the record has that. All right, the next thing was approval of the December nineteenth special board meeting. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? Director Dietrich, may I have a second? Director Christie? Uh, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm an abstainant.
That's fine. Thank you, Director Worsner, no, that's fine, that's appropriate. Uh, that motion carries. All right? Ms. Sheshor, please note the following executive sessions in the minutes. We've met on a few day, a few dates as follows. December nineteenth regarding real estate and personal matters. We've met again on January fourteenth regarding legal matters, and tonight, prior to the board meeting, we met January twenty-seventh regarding personnel matters. Okay? May I have a motion to approve the January twenty-seventh agenda? May I have a first? So, does that move? Okay, Director Dronell, may I have a second? Director Christie? Questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we'll continue on with reports. The first one will be superintendent, Christopher's monthly report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to see some people in the audience. I was not sure after the, uh, Eagles win last night whether anyone would be tuned in today or not. I'm, I'm a Steelers fan, which I'm, I'm admitting in public, but, uh, you know, even, even after they didn't have a great year, but I am wearing green today, so, uh, I'm not, I'm getting excited about what the Eagles are going to do, so, we, we have a great, uh, Super Bowl. I did get asked by probably twenty Henderson High School kids today whether we would be off the day after the Super Bowl. The answer is likely not, you know, so, and I was in Henderson today. So the updates we have, uh, we had quite a few activities across the district honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Junior on Martin Luther King Junior Day. Uh, some of the big ones included Weston High School prepared over three hundred bag lunches for local shelters, some students from there, and Mary C. House in Fernal Elementary hosted donation drives to support local organizations. Uh, so we had a lot of giving happening, uh, during that time. We are entering the final stages of our comprehensive planning, comprehensive planning process. We actually have a stakeholder meeting, uh, tomorrow night. Uh, this is for the next three years, will be the comp plan. Uh, we are required by the state of Pennsylvania to update that plan every three years, and that is part of this process. Uh, but the goal, uh, will be an opportunity to delve deeper into our goals and gather valuable feedback regarding specific action steps designed to benefit our students over the next three years. So that's been a great process, it's been led by Dr. Reynolds, we do appreciate her doing that, and, and all of our cabinet members have had, uh, a level of, of leadership too, as they've been running different committees during that process, so I'm looking forward to tomorrow night. Uh, professional development, uh, one of the things that we're working on right now is we are entering into, uh, a kind of our next phase with John Tanner and Bray Ed. Uh, so I know the board has, um, you know, previously met with, with John and really talked about what it, what accountability looks like, and how we're accountable to our stakeholders, and, and ways to think differently about how the district can function moving forward. Our administrative team will be starting, uh, a monthly workshop with, uh, with John, uh, here, uh, in the beginning of February, and so we're looking forward to that process and getting that moving. Uh, a lot of them have been engaged in online, uh, six-hour course as well that they've been doing, uh, with him on accountability, so that's moving forward, and we're excited about that. Uh, each year I try and pick a word, like, for, uh, like, kind of a focus word for the year. Last year it was, uh, it was ownership, uh, a lot of that had to do with me coming here as my, in the beginning of the year, and I'm honestly trying to buy a house, to be honest with you, which we were able to do, that was, that was a big challenge. But this year my word has been thrive, and really looking at ways that our district can not only, you know, survive and move forward, but to really thrive, and to see our students thrive, you know, by being engaged in classes, uh, you know, engaged in our community, and really looking at, at different ways that, as a district, we can promote that, that, that sense and that feeling. Uh, so it's, it's exciting, I'm excited to share that, and personally, that's, that's a great work for me this year as well. I'll have a daughter who's graduating from Weston this year, and, and just moving forward with some of those types of things, a son will be entering our, our high school program, so I'm excited, uh, to move forward as, as, you know, personally and professionally here, with that as a focus. Speaking of thriving, I had the opportunity to attend, uh, Westchester Area School District's first ever girls wrestling team match. Uh, we wrestled Coatesville, and it was, uh, it was, it was a very well-attended event at East High School. Uh, you know, there are a lot of girls wrestling, actually, from, we actually are a combined team this year, so we have girls from Ruston and East High School, we did have some girls at the beginning from Henderson, but they are not on the team, that, that, so really this year's been Ruston and East have been the, the primary, uh, students there, and uh, one of the girls on the Ruston team plays lacrosse for Ruston, and so the entire girls' lacrosse team was there supporting her, and she ended up pinning her girl, which was, got the whole crowd going pretty crazy, so, so a lot of fun. And they are wearing baby blue, in case you're wondering what the color is for a combined team, it's baby blue, I don't know. Uh, I, that's about my favorite, I don't make anybody that decision. Uh, some upcoming events we have, uh, we have kindergarten one-on-one on February sixth at Fugue Middle School. Uh, that's a great program for folks who have kids entering kindergarten, it's a really good opportunity for us to talk about what that experience looks like and to relieve some fears that is one of the more anxious groups that we meet with during the year, uh, is, is the kindergarten one-on-one night. We also have middle school one-on-one on February twelfth, that'll be held via Teams, and there is sign-ups for both of those on our district website. Uh, some students events, student events we have coming up, so, um, I won't, I, the East High School is going to have their coffee house on February seventh, uh, that's going to be a great time, and I know is a huge, uh, fundraiser, uh, and benefits lots of groups, I think, uh, N A H S is, is the big fundraiser for them. Pearson Henderson's Orchestra Concert is on February thirteenth, and we have two musicals that will happen here at the end of, uh, next month, at East and Ruston will both have their musicals at that time, so please check your school and our district calendar for dates and join in on celebrating the arts, which will be a lot of fun here coming up. The last thing I'd like to do this evening is, January is school director recognition month, and we are pleased to recognize our school directors. Um, we had a school board one-on-one, uh, meeting last, last, uh, week, and it was a great event, and we had several people come out to think about maybe running for school board, and we talked about what school board service means, uh, to the community. Uh, it is a lot of time, it is a lot of energy, it's a, it's a lot of, uh, you know, thinking and volunteering, I mean, it's one, it's one of the more involved volunteer services, I think, that you could be, to be in, to be honest with you, I mean, in terms of, well, what is expected of you, and, and kind of the, the work that you're doing in terms of how it supports your community, but it is incredibly important, and I am so fortunate to be here in this district with some amazing school directors who really, you know, pushing our thinking, who, you know, support us, but at the same time, really, uh, help us shape what we're doing as a school district, and I, I feel very blessed to be here, so I want to thank all of you very much for your service.
All right, thank you, Dr. Christopher. Now for one of our favorite parts of the board meeting, our monthly high school, uh, student representative reports. We've got Madison Matthews from East, Peter Kennedy from Henderson, and Diana Munoz-Lobez from Ruston. Please go ahead with your reports for tonight.
Good evening, everyone. It feels like I haven't seen you all since last year. I hope your twenty twenty-five has been off to a great start. Before I jump into E H S needs for January, there are a few things that took place after our last meeting in December. Thank you to Mr. Scholl, Ms. McCreech, and Vanguard for coordinating our code, which is a worldwide movement to introduce students to computer, computer science through coding activities. It was an exciting, interactive day for East students. Another thank you to Mr. Selfo and his orchestra students for hosting the Fugue East Winter Celebration Orchestral Concert. They put on an incredible, uh, performance and ended the year with a bang. The East Deca Chapter had a successful showing at the recent district competition. Fifty-two students received a medal and placed to move on to the state competition. Additionally, East has forty students completing research events to be presented at Deca States this February. Stay tuned to hear the results of states and how many people will move on to the international competition in Orlando, Florida. Now for the month of January. Our assistant principal, Mr. Sean Ryan, hosted a course planning night for students and families to discuss course options and the selection process. They later had time to explore from a variety of displays in the cafeteria and ask questions of representatives from our academic and elective areas. This was a great opportunity for students to plan their next school year and feel confident in the courses that they are taking. On January seventh, the East Unified Bachi Team competed against Henderson in the Fans in the Stands match. This event promoted inclusivity and support for our friends with differences. Thank you to our coaches, athletes, and fans for making this event a success. Students in foods, regional cuisine, pastry, and culinary are learning new recipes and the importance of hospitality. Mrs. Harris and Ms. Watson are providing their students with career and life experiences in the culinary realm. For example, on January tenth, Mrs. Harris had a breakfast sandwich sale where students or staff could purchase a nice toasty egg and bacon bagel sandwich for only three dollars. Let me just tell you, they were delicious. Speaking of Mrs. Harris, we welcomed her this month as one of our newest teachers at East, along with Mr. Childs. Mrs. Harris teaches intro to culinary and intro to food preparation, while Mr. Childs teaches intro to Python, Algebra II, Statistics, and Sports Analytics. This concludes the E H S report for the month of January. Thank you for your time, and go Birds!
Feel like I gotta try one of those sandwiches now. Um, anyways, uh, good evening, everyone. I hope you're doing well, uh, and enjoying Washington Birds taking home the win last night. Uh, January has been a fantastic month at Henderson, and it's truly been a great start to twenty twenty-five for all of us Warriors. As for sports, the Henderson Boys and Girls Swim Teams are currently at the top of the conference and are working to reclaim their chessmatt championship titles this Thursday night. Our Warrior Track and Field teams have battled these frigid January temperatures and are gearing up for, uh, Nike Indoor Nationals this weekend. Our Boys Wrestling Team currently has eight qualifiers for the District One Tournament, and our Basketball Teams are closing off their season strong, beating out both of our cross-season rivals. As for music, our performers made Henderson proud this month at the P M E A District One Band Orchestra and Choir Festivals, which were held at Haverford High School. Thus, I'd like to give a shout-out to A.J. Anne, Charlie Platt, and Nate Neuderman for qualifying for the P M E A Regional Orchestra. Nate Neuderman, Haye Krug, Skylar Trebell, and Ryan Merk for qualifying for the P M E A Regional Band, and Sidney Sheer, Leo Garcia, Daniel Kruzen, and Brooke Kaufman for qualifying for the P M E A Regional Choir. Congrats to all of them on their hard work and, um, success. Also, Henderson's, uh, hard-working clubs and teams have been very busy this month, uh, competing and making a difference across the Westchester community. Henderson's Mock Trial Team competing at the Benjamin, competed at the Benjamin Franklin Mock Trial Invitational at U Penn, where they qualified for the semifinal round, beating out dozens of other teams from the out dozens of other teams from the area in the field. Our Science Olympia Team placed seventh overall at the Coochtown University Invitational earlier this January and will compete this weekend at Columbia University in New York City against teams from across the country. Twenty-three members of our Model U.N. chapter traveled to Philadelphia this weekend for the Ivy League Model U.N. Conference, where students learned about international affairs, diplomacy, and negotiation. Our Science Honor Society hosted numerous guest speakers from across the area, including a physics professor from Drexel University, a surgeon at the Chester County Hospital, and a physicist from Westchester University to discuss STEM with our students. Our Academic Team placed first at the Great Valley Invitational earlier this month, winning their third major tournament of the year. They will face off in their final CCIU match on Wednesday against Ruston and Villamaria in the auditorium. And our Environmental Club organized a tree planting event this weekend, where they will plant new saplings at the Drive Preserve in East Bradford Township. Outside of Henderson, or outside of the classroom, excuse me, Henderson offered numerous opportunities for students to explore careers in STEM this month. Students enrolled in Biology and Anatomy had the chance to travel to the Philadelphia College of Osteopathic Medicine and the Mutter Museum, exploring innovation in medicine and healthcare. Students currently taking Physics had the chance to tour the University of Pennsylvania's Engineering School of Engineering and Applied Science, where they met with Penn professors and participated in hands-on demonstrations with cutting-edge technologies. Computer Science and Calculus students have the opportunity to tour the Lockheed Martin Facility in King of Prussia. And finally, students in Marine Biology and Environmental Science courses have the chance to travel to Westchester University to tour lab investigative water quality and soil samples in Chester County using ion chromatography technologies. Finally, this Friday, our Student Senate will host the Peters eighth graders and Henderson's Future Class of 2029 to explore the many options offered at Henderson and become familiar with their soon-to-be home. Thank you and go Birds!
Hello, everyone. It's felt like I haven't sat in this seat and spoken to you all in months. Ruston has been super busy and I have a lot to update you on. I'd first like to start off by saying that I hope you had a great winter break filled with joy and time with your loved ones, and that you're starting off your new year on a healthy and productive day. In December, Ruston had their chorus band and orchestra concerts. They were a huge success and filled with so much entertainment and talent. The auditoriums are filled with family and loved ones as they cheer on their talented musicians. We even had members of our Stetson Middle School Orchestra join the high schoolers during their concert. On December eighteenth, we had our first Winter Fest event that supported the Best Buddies as they were raising money to go to the Special Olympics. There was a waterside outside, braffles, yard games, and more. Our clubs have participated in it by selling sweet treats, pretzels, and hot chocolate, each raised over two hundred dollars. Our little nights had cookies and Santa and Grand Parents' Day. And let me tell you, it was the cutest thing I've ever seen. They were smiling so much, and even one of our teachers dressed up like Santa. Now I'll move on to what Ruston's been up to this month. On this, on January fifteenth and twenty-second, our entrepreneurship classes had their annual market day, as they sold many meals such as crab fries, Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, Dunkin', insomnia cookies, and even made paninis. And I spent more money than I should have that day. On student, our student council has been super busy this month. On MLK Day, they had their annual sandwich-making drive, where we gave over two hundred meals to Safe Harbor, Safe Agnes, and Salvation Market. Last week, we welcomed our families for course selection. We had around twenty-five student volunteers to give tours to our teachers and students from various subjects, as they talked about what their classes were all about. It was a great turnout, and we're thankful for everyone who took the time out of their evening to help out. On Wednesday, we have our Stetson eighth graders coming to Ruston for their mid-year orientation. They will take tours around the school and mentor classrooms as teachers give many presentations about their classes and answer any questions they may have. Tomorrow, we have our second annual Spike Bowl tournament. It gets very intense during lunch and learn that will raise money for our senior class. They are also planning a winter formal dance, which will be on February seventh, and the funds will go to our freshman and sophomore classes. Our Science Olympia Team went to Penn State University from January seventeenth through the eighteenth to compete in an invitational competition against thirty-three teams. They earned several medals, including first place in the bungee drop cup event. The Ruston Model U.N. Club traveled to Philadelphia this week for their committees, and they had so much fun, and they're looking forward to their spring event. Congratulations to Vaya Lemos with Duke Sharam for making the PMI District Orchestra Festival. He will be moving on to try out for state, so good luck tonight. Our winter sports teams have had a great season so far. Some exciting news from the athletics is that our new Westchester girls wrestling program is off to a great start and is having an amazing seeding season, competing in tournaments around the region and even hosting home matches here in Westchester. Senior Marley Seaman, the girl on the lacrosse team, placed fifth place in her first-ever tournament. We celebrated her senior night this past week at home, where she went three to zero. Some other highlights include the boys basketball team beating Oxford fifty-four to thirty-eight and Tannet fifty-one to forty-three. The girls' basketball team have had an incredible season and won against Oxford fifty-two to forty-two, Tannet forty-one to thirty-five, thirty-seven, Academy Park forty-six to thirty-five, Sun Valley sixty-four to fifty-eight, and more. The swim and dive team had huge wins against Great Valley, Unionville, Oxford, Tannet, and East. Congratulations to senior Ellie Smith for setting a new school record for an outstanding score of two hundred and sixty-nine point thirty-five for the dive team. Our winter track team has done an awesome job. Neefworth Beer Gibson took first place in high jump, and the sophomore girls got third place in the four-by-four relay. We've also had some great senior nights honoring all of our winter sport athletes for their hard work and dedication to their teams. The botch team had theirs last week, and this week we have the girls and boys basketball team. The swim and dive teams are celebrating tonight and as they take on Downingtown, so congratulations to them. Also, Ruston, along with the other high schools, Henderson and East are kicking off this spring season with girls' flag football program. At each high school in cooperation and support from the Philadelphia Eagles. We're looking forward to see how the season goes, and that's a wrap on what Ruston's been up to. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the informative reports tonight. They're always very interesting to find out what's going on at the high school's busy time of the year, but thank you very much for all the detail. All right, moving on, the next thing we have is personnel recommendations. Dr. Olmer, could you provide us the monthly personnel report, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Bedalacqua and members of our board. Our personnel report for the month of January twenty-twenty-five is as follows. We have nine resignations this month, one teacher, one registered behavior technician, three paraprofessionals, two secretaries, one custodian, and one accounts payable technician. We also have five retirement notifications. First, Mrs. Kathleen Erickson, an English learner paraprofessional at Henderson High School with fourteen years of service. Mr. Mark Rothman, an athletic trainer at East High School with twenty-three years of service. Ms. Lynn Robin Hughes, special education paraprofessional at East Bradford Elementary School with twenty years of service. Mrs. Carol McBolden, operations supervisor at Facilities and Operations Center with thirty-five years of service. Dr. Christopher, do you want to share this final retirement announcement? I guess I can't.
It could be, it'd be kind of weird, so. And Dr. Olmer has, has let us know, as you heard tonight from, from Judy, that Dr. Olmer is planning to retire here in August. And so I, I'd just like to say, I want to thank Jeff for all of his years here of service here at the school district. I mean, we certainly will celebrate him in different ways here in the next couple months, but Jeff has, you know, been a tireless worker here. I mean, Westchester has grown tremendously. At this point, Jeff's probably been involved in, I don't know, half the hires of the employees who currently work here, I mean, to be honest with you. So congratulations, Jeff. I know that you're gonna enjoy retirement. You have lots of fun things planned, and we are so thankful for your, your service here, so thank you.
Thank you, Dean. I appreciate that. Thank you. With additions to payroll, we are recommending the hiring of one teacher. Additionally, we are also recommending five long-term substitute teachers. In our administrative staff, we are recommending Dr. Madison Weary as our new supervisor of social studies and world languages at Spelman Education Center. Dr. Weary is coming to us from the Canuck Consolidated School District. Dr. Weary, we are thrilled to welcome you to our team. Can you please stand and be recognized? Welcome. Furthermore, we are recommending three paraprofessionals to the district. In our non-broadening bargaining staff, we are recommending our student enrollment specialist. For support staff, we are recommending two custodians and one secretary. We are also recommending the hiring of two substitute custodians. In personnel events, we communicated and delivered four status changes in the support staff and one status change in the professional staff. Furthermore, I communicated and delivered two involuntary transfers, one in the professional staff and one in the support staff. I also communicated and delivered three voluntary transfers, one in the professional staff, one in the support staff, and one in our custodial staff. Also, we are recommending the approval of two sabbaticals. In additional information, we are seeking approval for eleven start dates, one salary update, the approvals of, approval of one memorandum of understanding in the support staff for the position of special education student after-school help, and lists of drivers and aides for crafts buses and on-the-go kids buses. Receiving approval for additional three tutors on our tutoring list. In supplemental contracts, we're adding six annual contracts for this year, six contracts for the winter season of this school year, one hundred and eight contracts for the spring season of this school year, and ten adjustments to contracts in the current school year. We are also hoping to bring forth five gain-help contracts. I respectfully requesting board approval for all personal matters listed below. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Olmer. May I have a motion from the board to, to approve the January twenty-seventh Personnel Recommendations as presented by Dr. Olmer? May I have a first? Director Dietrich, may I have a second? Director Wamsley? Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item we have is the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the January twenty-seventh Consent Agenda as listed? May I have a first? Director Drenell, may I have a second? Director Parkinson? Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, motion carries. Now we'll continue on with several committee reports. The first is our Teaching, Learning, and Equity Committee Report. Director Drenell, divide.
Thank you, Director Bedalacqua. The Teaching, Learning, and Equity Committee met on Tuesday, January fourteenth. We approved the secondary German, Italian, and Health ten core instructional materials with a vote of four-zero. We also approved the calendar for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and we had an equity update presented by Dr. Reynolds. Our next meeting for Teaching, Learning, and Equity Committee will be held on Tuesday, February eleventh, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Director Drenell. Continuing on is the Chair of Property and Finance Committee. I'll provide the January Property and Finance Committee report. We had, we held a meeting on Tuesday the twenty-first last week. Mr. Scully reviewed the budget forecast models we do on a monthly basis and the changes to the previous model for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The total net changes for those projections was an amount of two million seven hundred and six thousand. That will be used to increase the fund balance designated for future village increases and would be used to reduce next year's twenty-five, twenty-six budget gap. Mr. Scully then proceeded with changes to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The net of all model changes for January resulted in a budget gap decrease of sixty-one thousand dollars. At this point, the tax increase for Chester County at this early stage of our, our budget review is at four-point-five percent. So is Delaware County. This right now is above our Act One increase, and the administration will continue to review the budget projections for potential savings to reduce the village impact for the twenty-five, twenty-six final budget and ensure that we're under the Act One, the Act One amount. The next thing, Mr. Scully advised the committee that every four years, the school district must establish a method and rate of compensation to be paid to local tax collectors for the upcoming term. The deadline for setting the rate of compensation is January first, twenty-twenty-sixth through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine, and we need to complete that by February fifteenth. Mr. Scully advised the committee that all collectors, with the exception of Thornbury, Delaware County, has deputized the school district to collect the taxes. The committee recommended approval of the Tax Collector Resolution to support that for Thornbury, Delaware County. The next item, Mr. Burster, our Director of Operations, provided an update to twenty-three, twenty-four Capital Reserve Project Bid Awards, and basically had a project bid for Stetson Middle Schools boiler repair and replacements, and we had an award amount of fourteen thousand three seventy-four to Bell's Welding and Mechanical Repair. The Property and Finance Committee recommended approval of that Capital Reserve Project as stated. Next, Mr. Burster proceeded with discussing the twenty-five, twenty-six Capital Reserve Project Bid Awards, and we had one bid for access control and camera installation replacement for several schools, including East Bradford, East Goshen, Exton, Fernhill, Glen Acres, and Greystone and Penwood Elementary Schools, and the Spelman Administration Building that we're in now, and the North Penn Street property. The, the amount of the, this award was for three hundred and fifty-five thousand one ten for turnkey technologies, and the Property and Finance Committee recommended approval as stated. The next item, Mr. Burster then proceeded with other twenty-five, twenty-six Capital Reserve Project Bid Awards, and they included the following: district-wide stormwater inlet repairs, East High School track repairs, Henderson High School HVAC pump drive replacements, Penwood Elementary School playground seal coating, and Ruston New Turf Field. And all those, those items totaled amount, broken down to several pieces. But anyway, they were the, they were the six projects that Mr. Burster went, uh, reviewed, and the Property and Finance Committee recommended approval of those Capital Reserve Project and Bid Awards as stated. The next item was approval of a solar grant application. Mr. Burster presented to the committee information for a solar aid project at East Bradford Elementary School that could partially be funded by a state grant. The grant application requires board resolution to be voted and recorded at this meeting. The grant request was a total price of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand. The district responsibility would be a total of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, as the total cost of this project is five hundred and sixty-five thousand and change. The committee recommended approval to apply for that thirty percent maximum grant as just stated. If, if successful in obtaining the grant, the project will be returned to the board for formal approval. Some more to come on that subject later. And the last item, Mr. Burster presented, the Hillsdale Elementary School Renovations in addition Project Contract Awards, and I'll read those off. They consisted of six contractors, mechanical contractor Tri-Cammy Mechanical for a total price of four-point-three million, a plumbing contractor Michael Mechanical for a price of one-point-three million, electrical contractor Electri-Tech for four-point-four million, sprinkler contractor Guy Cooper Incorporated for half a million, site contractor Twinning Construction for one-point-eight million, roofing contractor DeWillo Roofing for three million. The total cost of these bids that I just stated for those particular seven contractors totaled to twenty-four million five hundred and forty-two thousand and ten dollars for a project budget of twenty-nine million one hundred and thirty-eight twenty-six. The Property and Finance Committee recommended approval of the Hillsdale Elementary School renovations and project bid awards as I stated. The next Property and Finance Meeting, all are welcome to attend, will be held next month on Tuesday, February eighteenth, and that concludes my report. The next thing we have is the January Policy Review Meeting, and Director Dietrich, I'll let you handle that.
Thank you. Policy Review Committee met this past Tuesday, January twenty-first. The committee began to review policies in Section six-hundred Finances. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, February eighteenth. That is my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. All right, now we have other reports. Director Drenell, could you tell us what's happening on CCIU, please?
Thank you, sir. The Chester County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors held its monthly meeting on Wednesday, January fifteenth, at the ESC Technical College High School Brady One Campus in Downingtown. A representative of Herbion and Company, Inc., presented an overview of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four audit reports, which included the TCHS Audit Report. The CCIU and TCHS both received an unqualified audit, the highest possible score. Mr. Joseph Lobitsky, Director of Administrative Services, gave a presentation about the CCIU's budget. Mr. Lobitsky provided the board with an overview of the development of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six CCIU Core Operational Educational Categorical and Marketplace Services budgets. The proposed budgets will be presented in their entirety to the Board and Superintendents for consideration in February, March, twenty-twenty-five. In addition to require approval of the CCIU Board of Directors, the Core and Occupational Education the Core and Occupational Educational Education Budgets, uh, must be approved by each of the member school districts. Dr. George Furey, Executive Director, and his cabinet, uh, presented a mid-year report highlighting the CCIU's strategic focus on the four goal areas: a future-driven, data-driven, relationship-driven, and people-driven, detailing significant progress in each area. The next CCIU Board of Directors meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 19th, 2025, at 7:30 PM at the Educational Service Center, TCHS Brady One Campus in the cafeteria, uh, in Downingtown. That concludes that report.
Thank you, Director Drenell. Moving on in the agenda, we have other business. We do have two items tonight for vote.
Did you want me to go right now?
Oh, sorry. I missed you. Sorry, Director Kristin, can you give us a legislation?
Sure.
May I have a second, please?
Don't be nervous.
I think you give me the option.
Thank you, Director Belalqua. Uh, Legislative Council met virtually on Wednesday, January 22nd. Bill Wood, a school board director in the Abeng Grove School District, was re-elected to serve as the council's chair. Um, and then we were provided an update from the CCIU, um, just on the happenings in Harrisburg and the Pennsylvania General Assembly. Things of note for, you know, us since we are an educational body. Pete Schwyer and Brian Cutler are the Majority and Minority Chairs of the House Education Committee, while Linda Culver and Lindsey, Senator, Linda Culver and Senator Lindsey Williams, um, hold those positions in the Senate. Um, there's a bunch of education bills introduced, and, um, you know, can provide some updates on those down the line if any pass out of committee and out of, you know, either chamber. And then, uh, one, one thing to note, finally, on, uh, December 13th, Governor Shapiro reestablished the PA Early Learning Investment, um, Commission. The Commission's purpose is to secure support for public and private sector investment in early learning. And there will be a legislative breakfast this spring, like, um, the council always does and the CCIU always hosts. Um, and that is scheduled for April 9th at TCHS Brady One, um, which is a Wednesday morning, and all board members here are invited. Um, and our next meeting will be, uh, Wednesday, February 26th, which is, uh, two days after our next chairman board meeting, so I'll just give you next time, Gary.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Kristin, for the volunteer legislation updates on a monthly basis. Um, now moving on to other business, we do have two items tonight and two motions for the board. Director Drenell?
Thank you, Director Belalqua. Approval of the Hanover Research Services Agreement to provide custom research services at a cost of $54,500 for the period beginning January 31st, 2025, through January 30th, 2026. I so moved.
May I have a first, please? Second, you know, uh, Director Dietrich. So I have a first from Director Drenell. I have a second from Dr. Dietrich. Any questions or comments on what Mrs. spoke to? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We do have one more motion as I stated. Director Parkinson, please?
Approval was requested for the appointment of Dr. Tammy Floria as interim supervisor of English Language Arts effective January 22nd, 2025, at a rate of $660 per day. I so moved.
Thank you. I have a first from Director Parkinson. May I have a second, please? Director Drenell, any questions or comments from the board? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. And the next on the agenda was comments from residents. Was there any other additional comments tonight?
There are. There are two registrants for comments for this portion of the public comment, um, because I read the statement for the beginning of the meeting. I won't read it again. Uh, the first registered public comment after this section is Julie Alcornera.
Um, I'm Julie Alcornera from East Goshen Township. Um, we are here representing the Sustainability Committee from the East Goshen Elementary School, HSA. Uh, we are currently developing a composting program to collect food waste from the cafeteria and redirect it to local farms to support our ecosystem. Through this process, we discovered that the Westchester Elementary Schools are serving hot lunches on styrofoam trays instead of reusable trays that are thrown away after each use. This was unsettling to us, not only because we will not be able to compost these trays as part of our program, but also because of the harmful nature of styrofoam. When it is combined with hot foods and the potentially carcinogenic chemicals that can leach into that food, which is then consumed by our children, in this case, on the true school children. Both New York City and Philadelphia schools have had these changes in place for several years due to the concerns of the impact that has on the children's health. After meeting with the District Business Office and members, uh, from Anamark, our group discovered that the main reason our district is still using these styrofoam trays is the cost difference of the styrofoam to the more expensive compostable trays, which would be approximately $15,000 additional dollars for the district for the year. In hearing this, we reached out to our local representatives and met with, uh, Representative Chris Pieli, who informed us that he is co-sponsoring a bill that would prohibit food establishments, including cafeterias, from having provided food on or in polystyrene containers. Um, and in his letter to our, our group, he outlined, with health and environmental concerns of polystyrene in mind, many state and local governments have banned the use of polystyrene food products. In Pennsylvania, over a dozen townships and municipalities have passed ordinances to prohibit polystyrene food products, but a statewide ban has not yet been enacted. Um, as members of this Westchester community, we feel like ours is one to be proactive to issues associated with our children's health. We are requesting that, looking at our budget for next year, we will take that into consideration and opt for a more sustainable and healthier option that will support our mission of creating a better environment for our children. Um, just to illustrate the impact also that this has on our environment, if you stacked, um, all of the styrofoam trays from the elementary schools in our district on top of one another in one year, it would be thrown out to over one mile of styrofoam. That will not break down and still be there in three hundred years. Thank you for your time.
The next public commenter is Maura Dean.
Hi, thanks for your time. I appreciate your service to our community. I'm here with Julie from the East Goshen Elementary, um, Sustainability Committee. I'm students at Fugue as well as East Goshen Elementary, and then in Fed at Home. And to support Julie's statement, in addition to the issue of styrofoam trays, we're also in full of the district local consider, district-wide composting program. So besides supporting our local environment, there's also opportunity to save on municipal waste costs. Um, as just the estimate for four months of composting at just one elementary school saves over 30,000 pounds of waste in our community. For the entire district, we have the opportunity to save hundreds of thousands of pounds of food out of our local landfills and put that back into the health of our local farms. In effect, this would also add savings to our local municipalities in the form of less municipal trash waste. Uh, we're currently working with schools like Beaumont Elementary in Berwyn that have already incorporated composting into their everyday habits. By establishing procedures surrounding composting, our children and adolescents will become more aware of the issue of food waste and how to be part of the solution, rather than perpetuating the problems associated with trash in our community and our local waterways. By making this a more district-wide issue, we're hoping to, one, share resources, share information, share cost savings, and also teach our children how to prepare for their future, um, on our earth. Um, we also are hoping, as a community, we could possibly set up, um, composting waste bins with our, um, East Goshen Community's Sustainability Committee, um, as well at the township level. So we're, we're looking for your help to make the connections. There could be other composting or other sustainability programs at other schools that we're just not aware of. We'd love to make, help, you know, make the connections, have the conversation, and really love to have Westchester set the bar, because Westchester is so excellent. We love all the programs and offerings that you give to our kids. And we'd love to continue that and, um, help teach our children how to sustain themselves at home and at school. So, thank you.
We'd just like to thank both speakers tonight for coming out and spending the time to talk about the board and the administration. So thank you for your time, and thank you for the details you provided. Um, our next monthly board meeting will be next month on February 24th. And now, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? Yep, Director Womcze, and may I have a second? Director Frye, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, goodnight, everybody. Thank you for coming out.